I might have said something, but. I apologize if anybody heard that. Five thirty, we'll start with, um, good evening. Called the meeting of the Committee of the Whole Council, City Council Meeting to order. At this time, we'll have a mode of silence. We had a lot of issues, whether other things may be. Moment of silence for the nice weekend. Thank you. Alderman Condon, if you'd lead us all in, Pledge of Allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Alderman Condon. Mr. Krupp, if you'd be kind enough to call the roll tonight.
Dunn.
Here.
Kelly.
Here.
McGinnis.
Here.
Lee.
Here.
Gripp.
Here.
Condon.
Here.
Cornet.
Here.
Dickman.
Here.
Jobchin.
Here.
And Ortiz.
Here.
Ten. President, your honor.
Thank you, sir. So again, good evening, everyone, as we begin the meeting of the City Council Committee of the Whole. Welcome everybody in attendance and anybody who's watching through any particular electronic device. We respectfully welcome your comments and opinions, but please keep in mind that as you share your thoughts, you're sharing them with your fellow Davenporters and anybody throughout the region. We're happy you're participating in your city government, but please ask that your participation reflect the common desire we all share to make Davenport a better place. Especially for the folks in here, I'll just ask you to check your phone, make sure it's on silent or off, simply that it doesn't get in the way of someone talking. Uh, if you want to address the council on any particular item, please come to the podium. Uh, the microphone's above you. Love to know your name, order, address. If you're not from here, we'd love to know where you're from and you'll have five minutes. When you're addressing the council, please address us as a one body and not any individual, and we'll be respectful of you. Please be respectful of us. Thank you. City Administrator Spiegel, anything for us tonight?
Nothing this evening, your honor.
Okay, so we have a bunch of public hearings in community development, Public Works and Finance. We'll start with the public hearings in community development. Alderman Gripp, Alderwoman Lee, Alderman Gripp, please.
Thank you, your honor. I open, uh, public hearing for case REZ twenty-three dash zero-one being the request of Midwest Fidelity Partners LLC to rezone nineteen thirty and nineteen thirty-four North Division Street and seventeen-eleven West Pleasant Street from R four C, single-family and two-family central residential district to C-two corridor commercial district. Is there anyone from the public who's here to comment on this public hearing? Seeing no one, I move to close the public hearing. There's a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? This public hearing has been closed. I open the public hearing for case ROW twenty-three dash zero-one being the request of Midwest Fidelity Partners LLC to vacate the alley right-of-way located west of Division Street between West Pleasant Street and Hickory Grove Road. Is there anyone from the public here to comment on this public hearing? Seeing no one, I move to close the public hearing. There's a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? This public hearing has been closed. Back to you, your honor.
Thank you, Alderman Gripp and Alderwoman Lee. The next is Public Works. Alderman Dunn and Alderman Kelly. Alderman Dunn, please.
Thank you, your honor. Open the public hearing on the plan specification form of contract and estimated cost for the fire station number three, furniture, fixtures, and equipment project. Is there anyone from the public wishing to address this public hearing? Seeing none, I move to close the public hearing.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. This public hearing is closed. Open the second public hearing on the plan specification form of contract and estimated cost for the Davenport Police Department parking garage repair project. Is there anyone from the public wishing to address this public hearing? Seeing none, I move to close the public hearing.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. This public hearing is closed and back to you, your honor.
Thank you, Alderman Dunn and Alderman Kelly. Next area is Finance. Alderman Condon and Alderman Cornet. Alderman Condon, please.
Thank you, your honor. I open the public hearing on an amended sewer revenue loan and disbursement agreement and providing for the issuance and securing of the payment of nine million, six hundred and seven thousand, three hundred and seventy-six dollars and forty-six cents sewer revenue improvement and revenue bond series two thousand twenty-three. Is there anyone from the public wishing to address this public hearing? Seeing no one, I move to close the public hearing. There's a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? This public hearing is closed.
Thank you, Alderman Condon and Alderman Cornet. Okay, next area we have our proclamations. We have three tonight. Fair Housing Month, National Community Development Week, and Junior Achievement Day. The first one will be Fair Housing Month, and Alderman Ortiz will read. Alderman Ortiz, please.
Thank you, your honor. Proclamation reads, whereas safe and affordable housing is part of the American dream and a goal of all residents, and whereas individuals in the state of Iowa have the right to choose where to live and purchase or rent property without dimin- discrimination based on race, color, religion, age, age, sex, familial status, marital status, national origin slash ancestry, disability, sexual orientation, gender, identity, military status, unfavorable military discharge, and or- and order of protection status, and whereas federal and state laws affirm the right of every person to equal housing opportunity, and whereas economic stability, community health, and human relations in all communities and in the state of Iowa are improved by diversity and integration and the talents of nonprofit nonprofit organizations, housing service providers, financial institution, elected officials, state agencies, and others must be combined to promote and preserve integration, fair housing, and equal opportunity, and whereas realtors locally and nationally pledge to provide equal professional service without regard to race, color, religion, sex, handicap, familial status, or natural or national origin of any prospective client, customer, or of the resident of any community, and whereas realtors locally and nationally pledge to affirmingly pursue business practices that will ensure that everyone is welcome and no one is excluded, and therefore, we, Mike Mattson, mayor, and the City Council of Davenport, Iowa, do hereby proclaim the month of April as National Fair Housing Month in the city of Davenport to establish our community as an open and inclusive community committed to fair housing and to promote appropriate activities by private and public entities intended to provide or advocate for integration and equal housing opportunities for all residents and prospective residents of our city dated this fifth day of April. I move the proclamation.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, proclamation carries. I'll meet Civil Rights Chair Michael Guster at the podium, please.
I don't know about that. I don't, I don't know how to do that. But anyway, on, on behalf of the Davenport Civil Rights Commission, uh, I want to thank the, uh, mayor, the City Council for this proclamation recognizing me as a Fair Housing Month, and we're just appreciative and thank you very much.
Thank you, sir.
Okay, next we have National Community Development Week, and that will be read by Alderman Cornet. Alderman Cornet, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Proclamation reads, whereas the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development implemented the Community Development Block Grant, CDBG program in nineteen seventy-four, to allocate annual funding and flexibility to local communities in an effort to provide safe and affordable housing, as well as suitable living environments and economic opportunities to working families, and whereas the Home Investment Partnerships Home Program, implemented in nineteen ninety, also provides funding to local communities in an effort to create safe, affordable housing opportunities, and whereas the city of Davenport recognizes that CDBG and home-funded programs and projects are successful because of the partnerships and collaboration with residents, businesses, and community organizations, and whereas over the past five years, our community has received over seven million, seven hundred and eighty-two thousand, six hundred and ninety-nine dollars in CBD, CDBG funds, and two million, three hundred and six thousand, three hundred and fifty-three dollars in home funds, supporting a variety of projects and initiatives such as rental and down payment assistance and infrastructure improvements and housing rehabilitation directly benefiting our citizens and neighborhoods, and now therefore, we, Mike, Mayor Mike Mattson and the Davenport City Council recognize April tenth through the fourteenth of twenty twenty-three as National Community Development Week in support of these two valuable programs that have made tremendous contributions to the viability of the housing stock, public services, and economic vitality of our community. I move the approval of this proclamation.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, proclamation carries. This proclamation will be presented to Bruce Berger, Director of Community and Economic Development.
Bruce Berger with Community and Economic Development. Just want to tell you, uh, mayor and council, thank you for this. Also, a quick note, uh, next week we have a special tour we do every year in honor of Community Development Week, um, so I think it's Thursday at ten a.m. So all of you are invited, um, we also have officials from state and federal and, and the media, so. Look forward to seeing some of you there, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you. Next one is Junior Achievement Day. Alderman Gripp will read. Alderman Gripp, please.
All right, thank you, your honor. Uh, before I read the proclamation, I just want to say that I am a junior achievement graduate, and then last year, my wife talked me into, uh, being a junior achievement instructor, and today I was doing my second year in Mrs. Cook's class at Eisenhower Elementary with the third graders, and it's been a really great experience, and I want to recognize that we have a number of our staff folks who also, uh, participate and teach in JA, so the city of Davenport is doing, uh, their job, uh, to, to support a great organization. So I'll read the proclamation. Whereas the city of Davenport will observe Junior Achievement Day on April sixth, twenty twenty-three as an opportunity to recognize and celebrate junior achievement of the heartland for empowering our community's youth to own their economic success. Whereas junior achievement of the heartland's educational contributions equip our youth to become the next generation of productive employees and self-sufficient citizens to ensure the economic prosperity of Davenport. Whereas junior achievement of the heartland includes opportunities for educators, parents, and community volunteers to connect classroom learning to life after graduation. Whereas it is encouraged that parents, educators, businesses, and other members of the community join junior achievement efforts to ensure the future success for the communities in which they live. Now therefore, we, Mayor Mike Mattson and the Davenport City Council, do hereby proclaim April sixth, two thousand twenty-three as Junior Achievement Day in the city of Davenport, and we call upon the citizens of Davenport to support the goals of junior achievement of the heartland and encourage the continuation of strong partnerships between businesses, education, community, and our youth dated this fifth day of April, twenty twenty-three. I move the proclamation. There's a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Are there any opposed? All right, the proclamation is approved, and Linda Wood is accepting on behalf of Junior Achievement of the Heartland, and I'll meet you down here.
Thank you all, and Kyle, thank you for the contribution to Junior Achievement. Very much appreciated. Um, so just so you know, Davenport schools are very active with Junior Achievement. Um, Junior Achievement actually serves over seven thousand students just in the Davenport schools, over thirty schools, and we have twenty, two-hundred-and-sixty-eight unique volunteers. So what a unique volunteer is, is if one volunteer does two classrooms, it's just counted as one volunteer. But I will add that we still need volunteers in Jackson, Jefferson, and Wilson Elementary, so if anybody's interested, we still need a few more. So thank you to all for your involvement.
Thank you. All right, next area is Petition and Communications. Anyone? Alderman Jobchin.
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. Just want to announce that this upcoming Tuesday, April eleventh, at six-thirty p.m., Duck Creek Park Lodge will be having the next, uh, six-word meeting. We're pleased to have, uh, Director of Neighborhood Services, Rich Oswald, coming to be our guest speaker. Um, invite anybody, uh, wanting to come out that evening to attend. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Alderman Jobchin. Alderman Gripp.
All right, thank you, your honor. I just wanted to put a plug into my colleagues on the council for, uh, the CDBG Community Development Week Tour that Bruce mentioned, uh, which is next Thursday, which is, uh, pretty cool. So throughout the year, uh, we vote on a lot of, a lot of these things, and, and you kind of see an address, but you don't really know what's going to happen, so if you're able to join the, the tour, you, you see the pictures of what it looked like before, you get to see the types of funds that were used to make the improvement, and, and you see the current state, which is, uh, really, uh, very impressive. So, uh, it's always one of the highlights of, of my year, uh, on community development. I, I hope we have a good turnout from the council. Thank you, your honor.
Thank you, Alderman Gripp. Alderman Cornet.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, just like to say that, uh, the thirteenth, we'll ha- we're having a seventh ward meeting at Mid-City, uh, s- High School. Six o'clock, uh, haven't determined who's going to be talking, but, uh, we'll have somebody if it's just me. So stop on by.
Thank you, Alderman Cornet. Anyone else? Alderman Ortiz.
Thank you, your honor. I'd just like to let everybody know, Friday is, uh, opening day for the River Bandits game. Starts at six-thirty. I'm fortunate enough and excited to, uh, go to the opening game and hope, uh, the public can come out and show their support, and also I believe that the mayor is going to be, uh, throwing out the first pitch, so if anybody wants to see a pretty, uh, impressive straight change, uh, come to the game, and, uh, we will, uh, cheer him on and, uh, root on our local baseball team. So hope to see everybody down there, hope the weather, uh, uh, gives us a break and, uh, lets us enjoy a beautiful baseball game at a beautiful ballpark. Thank you, your honor.
Thank you, Alderman Ortiz. Anyone else? Very good. Okay, we'll move to our particular areas, four areas of discussion. Community Development, Public Safety, Public Works and Finance. The first one's Community Development. Alderman Gripp and Alderwoman Lee will discuss. Alderman Gripp, please.
All right, thank you, your honor. We have two items on community development this evening. Item number one is a first consideration ordinance for case REZ twenty-three dash zero-one being the request of Midwest Fidelity Partners LLC to rezone nineteen thirty and nineteen thirty-four North Division Street and seventeen-eleven West Pleasant Street from R four C, single-family and two-family central residential district to C-two corridor commercial district. Is there anyone from the public who's here to comment on this item? Seeing no one, is there anyone from the council who has comments? Alderman Cornet.
Thank you. Um, this is a car wash that's going up on the corner of Hickory Grove. Is that right?
Yeah, that's, yep, this is related to that development, yes.
Okay, um, that intersection's pretty, uh, pretty congested already. Has, has staff looked at, uh, the traffic problems with having a, uh, car wash there?
Uh, Rich Oswald, Development, Neighborhood Services Director. So I'll sort of play two roles. Uh, Brian, uh, Shad, our city engineer, wasn't able to be here tonight, but, uh, staff has looked at that intersection for the traffic. Uh, some of the proposals is limiting on Hickory Grove, uh, the right-in, right-out, and then, uh, on Division, there still is a right-in, uh, right-out and left-in, left-out, but we're gonna, I think we're gonna relook at that, um, and bring something back once Brian has time to fully review that, but that is still being reviewed on Division for traffic concerns.
So staff is, is recommending this?
So staff is recommending, uh, currently recommending the right-in, right-out on Hickory Grove and looking to do the same possibly on, uh, Division. Brian's just looking at some more traffic information and should have that, uh, for our next meeting.
Okay. All right, well, thank you very much. Uh, that's all for right now.
Thank you. Alderman Ortiz.
Thank you, Chair. Um, I'd just like to thank this company for, uh, investing in this area. Uh, went to the neighborhood meeting that we had, and a number of these issues, uh, were brought up, and, and I feel confident that they're addressed. The company has been, um, since I've talked to our staff and been a part of this, has been very willing to, uh, and open to making this, uh, site work. They have, it came in and said, well, this is the way it's going to be, or this is the only way we're willing to do it. Um, like I said, they've been really open to making this work, and I've, um, with us opening up the alley, the way it sits on the property, um, I'm very excited, and like I said, we have a number of car washes in Davenport, but we don't have quality car washes on the west side of Davenport. I cannot wait for this one to be open. I hope to be their first monthly membership person, because the ones that we have to offer, um, I just, pretty disappointed, so, um, I can't wait for this, and I hope my colleagues support it because it's much needed. Thank you, Chair.
All right, so, uh, seeing no other comments, I, I will make, uh, a comment on, on the traffic. So, uh, to answer Alderman Cornet's question, currently as proposed, I think it's right-in, right-out on Hickory Grove, um, but as it's in our packet, it's, it's full access from Division. I think, uh, that's the, the one concern I have with the development is that particular access point. Specifically, when you're coming from, uh, Division heading north and, and turning left into the property, I, I would ask that we get an evaluation from, uh, Mr. Shad next week when he's back on, um, whether that should be full access or right-in, right-out, and, and get a formal recommendation from, from him. Seeing no one else, we will move on to item number two. Item number two is a first consideration ordinance for case ROW twenty-three dash zero-one being the request of Midwest Fidelity Partners LLC to vacate the alley right-of-way located west of North Division Street between West Pleasant Street and Hickory Grove Road. Is there anyone from the public here to comment on this item? Anyone from council? Alderman Cornet.
Thank you. Uh, again, we're going to be giving up the alleyway with, uh, the utility right-ways and stuff. I mean, you know, is that going to affect the utilities that are back there for us giving up the, the alley?
Uh, Matt Wodderich with Development and Neighborhood Services. Uh, we have reached out to utility companies. There's currently three poles in that alley. Um, they have stated that they can accommodate relocating their utilities, uh, following development, and that easements will be provided should any utilities remain within that alleyway.
Okay, and the city won't lose anything by giving up that alley?
No.
Do you have another comment? Alderman Cornet?
No.
Okay. All right. Seeing no one else, uh, this item will move on, and I'll ask Alderwoman Lee to please set our agenda.
Thank you very much. I move that items one and two be placed on the discussion agenda.
There's a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Are there any opposed? All right, that concludes Community Development, your honor.
I got it. I got it. Thanks. Thank you, Alderman, uh, Gripp and Alderwoman Lee. Next area is Public Safety. Alderman Jobchin, Alderma- Alderwoman Dickman will discuss. Alderman Jobchin, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First item on our Public Safety Agenda is a third consideration ordinance amending Schedule eleven, Resident Parking Only of Chapter ten point nine-six entitled Schedules by adding Sixth Street along the south side from seventy-five feet east of Ripley Street, east eighty feet thereto. Is there anyone from the public wishing to comment on this item? Anyone from council? Seeing none, that I move on. Item number two, third consideration ordinance amending Schedule eleven, Resident Parking Only of Chapter ten point nine-six entitled Schedules by adding Bridge Avenue along the frontage of ten thirty-two Bridge Avenue thereto. Is there anyone from public wishing to comment on this item? Anyone from council? Seeing none, that I move on. Item number three, a second consideration ordinance amending Schedule one, Snow Routes of Chapter ten point nine-six entitled Schedules by deleting various streets throughout the city therfrom. Is there anyone from public wishing to comment on this item? Anyone from council? Seeing none, that'll move on. Item number four, um, Resolution approving street lane or public ground closures, closure request for the listed dates and times to hold outdoor events. I'll read both of the, or I'll read each of these before asking for comment. First, Knights of Columbus, Saint Paul the Apostle, Blue Mass, nine sixteen East Rush Home Street, Thursday, May eighteenth, twenty twenty-three, four thirty p.m. to eight p.m. Closure, East Rush Home Street from Arlington Avenue to Cary Avenue. Next, Quad Cities Bicycle Club, Quick Star Criterion, Village of East Davenport, Monday, May twenty-ninth, twenty twenty-three, five a.m. to nine p.m. Closures, Mount Street from East Eleventh Street to East Twelfth Street. East Twelfth Street, Fulton Avenue from Mount Street to Glenwood Avenue. Glenwood Avenue from Fulton Avenue to Hillcrest Avenue. Hillcrest Avenue from Glenwood Avenue to River Street. East Eleventh Street from Mount Street to River Street. Is there anyone from, oop, excuse me, and then the last one? Village of East Davenport Business Association, Village Hops, Village of East Davenport, Saturday, June seventeenth, twenty twenty-three, twelve p.m. to eight p.m. Closures, East Eleventh Street from Mount Street to Jersey Ridge Road. Christie Street from East Eleventh Street, north to the alley. Jersey Ridge Road from East Eleventh Street, north to the alley. Is there anyone from public wishing to comment on the, these items? Anyone from council? Seeing none, those items, or that item will move on. Item number five, Motion Approving a Noise Variance Request for the Listed Date and Time for an Outdoor Event. German American Heritage Center and Museum, Best of the Worst, seven twelve, West Second Street, Saturday, June seventeenth, twenty twenty-three, eleven a.m. to three p.m. Outdoor Music Band over fifty D B A. Is there anyone from public wishing to comment on this item? Anyone from council? Seeing none, that item will move on. And then item number six, Motion Approving Beer and Liquor License Applications. Um, I'll read Section A, New License, New Owner, Temporary Permit, Temporary Outdoor Area, Location Transfer, et cetera. First, Assumption High School, uh, Temporary Event, April night, April twenty-two, ten twenty, West Central Park Avenue, License Type, Class C Liquor. And then we have the items under, um, Section B, which are there for people's review. Um, I will not read those, and then to finish it off, we have, um, some items under Section C, Request for nineteen-twenty-year-old Exemption. We have first, At the Stardust, two eighteen Iowa Street, License Type, Class C Liquor, On Premises, and then Redstone Room, one twenty-nine Main Street, Second Floor, License Type, Class C Liquor, On Premises. Is there anyone from public wishing to comment on these items? Anyone from council? Um, just will make one note, as typical, will, I will, um, recuse myself from the April night, uh, vote next week. Otherwise, I would ask Alderwoman Dickman to please set the agenda.
I move that all items be placed on the consent agenda.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. That closes Public Safety. Back to you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Alderman Jobchin and Alderwoman Dickman. The next area is Public Works. Alderman Dunn and Alderman Kelly will discuss. Alderman Dunn, please.
Thank you, your honor. Item number one is a resolution approving the plan specification form of contract and estimated cost for the fire station number three furniture, fixtures, and equipment project. Is there anyone from the public wishing to address this item? Council? Seeing none, this item will move on. Item number two is a resolution approving the plan specification form of contract and estimated cost for the Davenport Police Department Parking Garage Repair Project. Is there anyone from the public wishing to address this item? Council? Seeing none, this item will move on. Item number three is a resolution warning a contract for the Third and Brady Streetscaping Project.
Project to Centennial Contractors of the Quad Cities of Moline, Illinois, in the amount of $456,273. Is there anyone from the public wishing to address this item? Council? Seeing none, this item will move on. Item number four is a resolution awarding a contract for the North Clark Street to West, West 11th Street to West 13th Street Reconstruction Project to Five Cities Construction Company of Covalley, Illinois, in the amount of $821,083.90. Is there anyone from the public wishing to address this item? Council? Seeing none, this item will move on. Item number five is a resolution awarding a contract for the West 36th Street, Pacific Street to North Division Street Reconstruction Project to Hawkeye Paving Corporation of Davenport, Iowa, in the amount of $816,730.10. Is there anyone from the public wishing to address this item? Council? Seeing none, this item will move on. Item number six is a resolution awarding a contract for the Fairmount Community Center Project to Precision Builders of Bettendorf, Iowa, in the amount of $2,868,972. Is there anyone from the public wishing to address this item? Council? Seeing none, this item will move on. Item number seven is a resolution approving Amendment Number One to Sasaki Associates Incorporated of Denver, Colorado, in the amount of $1,106,665. Is there anyone from the public wishing to address this item? Council? Alderman Jobchin.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Yesterday at management update, we had a little discussion on this item, and City Minister Spiegel, you know, had mentioned about the consistent support from the council. You know, speaking of consistency, I think I've been the one that's probably consistently opposed the Main Street landing project from trying to get it removed from the ARPA draft budget to voting no for the first Sasaki contract. I will continue to voice out my opposition for the overall program. Not knocking Sasaki, they're a wonderful, wonderful company that if anyone's going to do this, we need to have them do it. But again, this kind of goes to Alderwoman Lee's point yesterday about asking the question of go, no, go. I feel we've probably passed that point a long time ago. And metaphorically, the train's kind of moving forward, just as the blessing and the curse of the CP merger, which has given us some money to go forward and get extra money from the state to come up with what probably will be a transformational development down along the riverfront. You know, I think the city of Davenport does need some development along the riverfront. However, I'd still have my concerns that the scope of the project that we're looking to do will create an operational and capital budget constraint moving forward that we will never get rid of as a city. And so I do have my concerns there. And then speaking of the railroad, you know, I still have concerns. You know, what's this attraction going to look like as the increased number of trains go across our riverfront? You know, that's going to happen during the day. You know, the people that are going to want to come visit this attraction, is that going to be a huge deterrent for them? So if we're going to spend all this money to create this great big attraction down on our wonderful riverfront, and people aren't going to want to go there because the experience is hampered by the trains that we're going to do absolutely nothing about anymore, you know, I think that ends up being a big waste. And so again, I just want to voice my opposition here. It's not against Sasaki. They're great. And, you know, I may be one of the few that thinks this way, and that's fine. I hope I'm proven wrong in the end, but that's what I have to say about that.
Thank you, Alderman Jobchin. Alderman Condon.
In the spirit of being consistently consistent, I appreciate the nuance to your opposition. And I'll just anecdotally say that I was down on our riverfront last Saturday, and we chased some geese, we jumped in some mud puddles, we welcomed back the pelicans, and then we ran out of things to do, and we walked across the skybridge. So whenever I tell people where I'm from, Davenport, Iowa, it doesn't oftentimes get recognition from people who aren't familiar with the area, and then I quickly double down, it's right by the Mississippi River. And that's, that's been our identity, and I think these improvements are long overdue. And I'm still really enthused with all the serendipity of funding that came available to make this happen without being too much of a burden on the, on the front end for the, for the city of Davenport. So I have faith in staff that we're going to execute this well and that we're going to create funding systems to, to make sure that we can maintain it. So appreciate the dialogue and discussion.
Thank you, Alderman Condon. Anyone else? Seeing none, this item will move on. Item number eight is a resolution approving Change Order One to CDMI Concrete Contractors of Port Byron, Illinois, in the amount of $200,000 for the FY 2023 Seal Coat Road Rehabilitation Program. Is there anyone from the public wishing to address this item? Council? Seeing none, this item will move on. Item number nine is a resolution awarding a contract with the Center of Transportation and Environment of Atlanta, Georgia, for consulting services regarding the purchase and deployment of four electric buses and related infrastructure in the amount not to exceed $495,000. Is there anyone from the public wishing to address this item? Council? Seeing none, this item will move on. Item number 10 is a resolution approving and adopting Davenport's contribution to the submission of an updated five-year Scott County Multi-Jurisdictional Hazard Mitigation Plan to the Federal Emergency Management Agency by the Bay State Regional Commission and the Scott County Emergency Management Agency for the purposes of updating and renewing the plan. Is there anyone from the public wishing to address this item? Council? Seeing none, this item will move on. And item number 11 is a resolution authorizing the submission of a hazardous mitigation assistance grant application to the Federal Emergency Management Agency for financial assistance with the River Drive and Marquette Street Flood Mitigation Project. Is there anyone from the public wishing to address this item? Council? Alderwoman Lee.
Thank you. Do we have, if this is approved, do we have any idea when the money would be available?
Claymere Public Works. We have been told anywhere between three to six months.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Seeing none, this item will move on. And Alderman Kelly, would you set the agenda for us, please?
Yes, sir. I would like to make a motion that all eleven items be moved over to the consent agenda.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. And the agenda is set, and back to you, Your Honor.
Thank you, Alderman Dunn and Alderman Kelly. Next area is Finance. Alderman Condon and Alderman Cornet will discuss. Alderman Condon, please.
Thank you, Your Honor. There's seven items on Finance this evening. Item number one is a first consideration ordinance providing for the sale and issuance of $35,155,000 general obligation corporate bonds, Series 2023, for the levy of taxes to pay for the same. Noting that staff recommends suspension of the rules and passage of second and third considerations, I'll open it up for public comment. And council? Item number one, I recommend we'll stay on discussion. Item number two is a first consideration ordinance amending Chapter 5.10 entitled Alcoholic Beverage Control by repealing the current Chapter 5.10 and enacting a new Chapter 5.10 entitled Alcoholic Beverage Control in its place. Is there anyone from the public wishing to address item number two? Council? Item number two will move on. Item number three is a resolution to fix meeting date for hearing on the issuance of not to exceed $31 million general obligation corporate bonds, Series 2024. Is there anyone from the public wishing to address item number three? Council? Item number three will move on. Item number four is a resolution setting a public hearing to amend the fiscal year 2023 operating and capital improvement budgets. Anyone from the public wishing to address item number four? Council? That will move on. Item number five is a resolution authorizing and approving an amended sewer revenue loan and disbursement agreement in providing for the issuance and securing the payment of $9,607,376.46 sewer revenue improvement and refunding bond, Series 2023. Anyone from the public wishing to address item number five? Council? And that will move on. Item number six is a resolution approving six 2023 Open Prairie Forest cover property tax exemptions. Anyone from the public wishing to address item number six? Council? That will move on. And finally, item number seven is a motion awarding a contract for the WeGo Swing installation at Vandevere Botanical Park to the Henley Group LLC of Muscatine, Iowa, in the amount of $71,955. Is there anyone from the public wishing to address item number seven? Council? Alderman Gripp.
Sorry, I wasn't here yesterday, so I don't know if we got a timeline on installation for this. Been, been looking forward to, for this for a number of years and very excited that it's about to happen.
Chad Dyson, Parks and Rec Director. Installation upon reward, we were looking probably, excuse me, eight to 12 weeks out, so late summer. Should be in.
That's great news, and I would like to say we continue to do better and get better at Inclusive Play, and this is going to be a great addition at Vandevere Park. So kudos to Chad for seeing this through. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Gripp. Alderman Ortiz.
Thank you, Chair. I'd just like to say, you know, I'm excited for this and would really love, love, love to have these in the fourth ward. So can't wait for them to be more throughout the city. Again, thanks to staff and everybody that made this possible.
Thank you, Alderman Ortiz. Seeing no one else, recommend item number seven moves on. Reminding us that item number one is going to stay on discussion, I'll ask Alderman Cornet, would you please set our agenda? And I apologize, before I say that, I need to mention that below on our agenda, we have our purchases from 10,000 to 50,000. There's just one today, but we don't read those out loud. It's listed there for your information. Alderman Cornet, would you please set our agenda?
Yes, thank you very much. All items, I would, I would recommend that all items be placed on the consent agenda, except for item one, which would remain on the discussion.
There's a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That concludes Finance. Thank you, Your Honor.
Thank you, Alderman Condon and Alderman Cornet. The next area, are there any other ordinances, resolutions, or motions? There are none for tonight. Next area, is there any other public business to discuss outside of anything that was on the agenda? If you do, please name, order, address. Love to know where you're from if you're not from here. Five minutes. Thank you.
My name's Dale Gilmore. I live in the sixth ward. I brought up Vision Way. Good evening. My name's Dale Gilmore, and I live in the sixth ward. Some of what I'm about to read was read by me at the council meeting on May 20th, 2015, some eight years ago. So to a few of you, this may seem like a rerun, but I've added some additional information partway through and at the end, so please listen carefully. It's the spring, and they're growing. I'm not talking about flowers or dandelions. I'm talking about the number of illegal signs growing in the public right-of-way. You know the ones that offer to clean your gutters, mow your lawn, repair your drywall, give you swimming lessons, par wash and stain your deck, landscape your property, buy your house, clean your house, remove your unwanted trees, or sell you a mattress. And those are just the ones I saw on my way down here. With the recent hail, we now have seen at least three different roofing inspection and repair signs posted illegally at multiple locations. All signs in the public right-of-way are illegal and must be removed. I think they make the city look trashy. Store names or individual phone numbers are on all of these signs, so contacting the violators really shouldn't be that big of a problem. Just call the store where the number listed and tell them they're in violation of ordinance, whatever number it is, and that they have 24 hours to remove their illegal signs. If the signs are not removed within 24 hours, the city will photograph their placement, remove them, hold them as evidence, and charge the violators a fine of up to $100 per sign. I don't think it would take too many examples to put a stop to this. Let them put their signs in Bettendorf or Rock Island or Moline, but not in Davenport. I have been chosen, though I don't consider myself the official spokesperson, to represent the Illegal Sign Removal Team, or as we call it, the ISRT. Our team is a group of individuals concerned with increasing number of signs illegally placed in boulevards on public property and public right-of-ways, medians, et cetera. Our team has a warning for those who think the world is theirs for the signing. Many of our ISRT members are becoming experts at magic. We can make many signs disappear within 24 hours of their placement. The ISRT is always looking for individuals to join our team. And if you join, you will receive at no cost one of these limited edition official you will receive one of these lime green limited edition official membership shirts at, at, oh, say that, at absolutely no cost. Show our community that you care. We can really use all our help that we get, that we can get. My wife gets embarrassed when I stop the car on our way to church to throw an illegal sign in the trunk. And at every public comment session after a regular city council meeting, we will showcase the monthly winner of the Sign of Our Times Award. Samples will be brought in for display. We'll, we'll bring enough samples for everyone and may even have a few dozen left over. Phone numbers and/or store names will be obliterated so to not give anybody a free advertisement. So who wants to join our organization? See me after the meeting. We have free shirts waiting for you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Any other reports, Ms. Spiegel? Is there a motion to adjourn? All in favor? Have a happy, safe Easter weekend.